Recording in progress.
I see no hands raised.
Okay, great. Then we'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and move on to public hearings. The following rules and procedures shall apply to public hearings held by the ZBA. The chairperson opens the public hearing by announcing the subject of the appeal. The petition by identifying the applicant's name, case number, specified request, and the general location of the subject property. Chairperson summarizes the procedures and rules we follow during the hearing. The chairperson will then call on the petitioner or his or her representative to present statements in support of the appeal along with any supporting evidence. Next, the petitioner, his or her agent or attorney may present his or her case, including presenting witnesses on his or her behalf. Next, members of the ZBA shall report on their site inspection and any conversations with the petitioner that they may have had. After which, members of the public who support the petitioner can speak in correspondence if any is read. After which, members of the public who oppose the petitioner speak in correspondence as read. Next, the chairperson may permit the petitioner rebuttal within limits set by the chairperson. After which time, chairperson will upon motion of any member announce the close of the hearing or announce continuation of the public hearing. After which time, the ZBA will then deliberate the request and decide the issue if need be, or the issue may be postponed to a future meeting. At this time, we'll open public hearing of variance number 22002 by Martin Skura.
Am I pronouncing that correct?
Perfect. Mr. Martin Skura for Natalie/Nell Stern regarding 3700 Miller Road and vacant property numbers are H-08-14-186-016 and -017 and -018 to allow the reconfiguration of three nonconforming parcels into two parcels, one of which having a lot width of 100 foot, which would be a 50-foot reduction into the floor lot width, and both resulting parcels having a lot area less than 1 acre minimum as required by the zoning ordinances. So without further ado, who will be speaking on behalf of the petitioner? Mr. Skura?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why don't you go ahead? The floor is yours.
Do I need to stand or sit inside? A lot of things.
We don't have much in the way of rules of evidence or other procedure like that.
Mr. Chair, do we need to do a square again?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, yes, okay. What was I doing? I was looking at GIS data. Sorry.
Go ahead, Mr. Skura.
So this property was listed for sale. And during the process of trying to purchase it, I discovered that there was no per test on yet. And then it didn't conform to the present zoning. And if it was, if we were forced to leave it as a 75-foot lot, then to try and conform to the present setbacks, you'd be down to a 35-foot white house. And for that neighborhood, it also, I don't think it would look very well. So also, to place the well and drain field on the property, it created an issue also that we do intend to resolve by reconfiguring, redoing the drain field for Lot 16, which the house is on. That way, I can isolate a well 100 feet away from the drain field, the neighbor, the owner of these three lots.
Can I stop you right there?
Sure.
I'm a little confused. Sure. Are you the owner?
No.
Am I who?
The owner.
No, I'm representing the owner.
Okay.
Who are you purchasing it?
Okay, you're a purchaser. Or a potential, has the purchase been finalized?
No.
Well, it can't be, of course. You wouldn't be the owner.
No.
Are you a purchaser?
Intending to move there.
Are you a purchaser of all three lots?
No.
What are you a purchaser of?
Forgive me?
What lots would you be?
16 and 25 feet of 17. Did you have a drawing?
Yes.
It would be one of the two resulting lots if the lots were permitted.
Yeah, yeah. The property owner lives in Texas with her daughter. And Russ is their realtor who has the property listed.
Okay, Russ, last name?
Hagy.
Again, please.
Hagy.
Thank you. All right. Go ahead.
Okay, so in order to get that 100 feet from the well, they'll have to reconfigure the drain field also. But to adhere to the present setbacks in the middle lot, they've been paying on these lots individually forever. I thought it would be a much better-looking home if I could at least buy 25 feet from the middle lot and put a much nicer home there suited for the neighborhood.
Do you have authority in writing to act on behalf of the owner?
Yes, sir. I have a letter that I submitted from the county.
It's noted on the SIO Township that there's an authorization letter.
This was the only way I could find?
Hold on just a moment, Mr. Chair. Well, I think that authorization letter, Mr. Walsh, is, I always understood to be restricted only to the agreement for permissions, permission of officials of SIO Township to enter the property, not to speak on behalf of the owner.
I'm just looking at the note underneath the owner's signature saying "See Authorization Letter." Since we don't have this.
See Authorization.
Where is the letter?
Where are we?
It's on the cover page of SIO.
On the cover page of the submittal.
Right underneath the.
Where it says Janet Stern, she signed it.
Oh, I see. See the authorization.
Right.
Okay.
I'm assuming that's.
So it's a Stern, actually, the owner is Natalie G.
It's a trust, isn't it?
Yes, Stern, and it's a trust of a Seder family.
Can I say something?
Sure.
So I perhaps should have started differently. We didn't know how to get this accomplished. We couldn't get an answer from anyone for sure that if I bought the property, I could get a building permit for it. So this was the last resort.
Okay.
I just have a question. So the, there are three parcels, and the house is on two of the parcels, the existing house. And so what they're trying to do is sell not the house, but it's the whole thing.
The house is for sale also.
So are you purchasing the house?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, let's back up here.
So you're purchasing the other lot?
Oh, okay.
As a real estate agent, I talk.
Sure. You've been sworn in, so go ahead.
And I signed it too.
Lost.
Yeah, there.
I'm sorry. So we're doing a Zoom meeting and we just lost for a moment. We're having challenges with Zoom. So anyway, go ahead, Mr. Hagy.
So we have three nonconforming lots. The house is on one. It actually, it encroaches the middle lot.
Right. How did that happen?
Because the owners owned all three properties, but.
Was there a building permit issued?
Yeah, the garage, the garage is over onto the.
Oh, I understand. That's why I'm asking. How was that accomplished?
Did you take note of the garage on the other side of the lot?
I think that's what they're talking about.
No, they're talking about the Sterns' lot. The other side is two feet off the property line, the garage.
The existing house on the.
It shows on the survey.
I saw that portion of a building wasn't easily described there, but it did appear to be a garage when I went over and drove by it. It's an attached garage.
We're having more Zoom issues.
Did you do the GIS? And you can see the whole thing? Did you see the GIS?
Jan, the problem with that is that I can't put that in the record. I'm sorry. If you want to take notice of something like that, we can do it.
Yeah.
But we're going to have to do some identification and whatnot. And generally, we're going to have to judge all the applications based upon the evidence that's presented. Now, why don't we hold on just a second?
Yes, the Zoom meeting.
Did you try the pen? Sometimes the Zoom is a little bit.
Aware of what we're trying to accomplish. I just want a building permit for it.
Well, okay, I understand. So when you're saying that there's a problem with the distance of the well from the existing well to the whatever well.
No well, no existing well.
That house doesn't have a well?
The house does, but that's not our problem. Our problem is our drain field would be too close to Lot 16's well. Because Lot 16 is so.
Which lot do you want to buy?
16 and 25 feet of 17.
I was thinking 15. You're right, it is 16. And what's going to happen to the existing house?
No, it's.
Let's see there.
They have an offer.
But you're not buying that.
I have nothing to do with that. I'm just here to.
But you want 25.
Make sure I get a building permit.
Yes. You want 25 feet of that existing property?
Yes. Because I've got to move, if I'm to conform with the side yard setbacks, that'll eat up more than half the lot with setbacks if I stay at 75 feet. That's the existing width. If I can make it 100 foot, it'll be a much more presentable home.
Mr. Hagy, did you want to say anything else?
I mean, I haven't.
We have to go.
Could you step to the table so that you can see them?
We do have the drawing. It was the one that was submitted.
I don't know if that's, is that the one that was submitted? Yes. Because when, at the end of the day, what would happen is 17 would be gone. It would just be 16 and 18.
We understand. You have three separate lots. Neither of them are conforming. You want to combine the lots to make two lots, but then neither of them would be conforming either.
Just more conforming.
I understand.
Yeah. And so then, what he was trying to explain is that the current septic system on 18, which is where the existing house is, again, is on Lot 17 right now. Partly is on 17, partly is on 18, just like the garage encroaching.
A question. Is this square representing the septic?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Yep. So we've already had creators out here to give us an estimate, to reconfigure it so that everything will be on the new Lot 18 and nothing will be encroaching on the new Lot 16. Does that make sense?
Yeah. But our first step in this process is so on the drawing that was, the large drawing that was submitted to us, what, where is the existing field located on 18? It's the square right here. Just to make it clear, because it is not clear on the drawing, that it would be the line near the bottom of the drawing in a square, which is partially on the new 16. I'm sorry. Go ahead.
No, I'm sorry. I was just apologizing. It's not labeled and.
I'm just, and please bear with me a little bit. I'm trying to put on the record what we're saying. That's all I'm trying to do at this point.
Gotcha.
So that someone who looks at this later will say, yes, we understand what was discussed at the meeting. So going back, the drain field is the square on the large drawing that was submitted with the request, which is basically towards the bottom of the drawing. And.
Bisected by that vertical line.
I'm sorry. You know, I'd mark drain field on it and put it as an exhibit, but unfortunately, my request to mark and exhibit the last hearing did not work. It's still in my binder. All right, but at any event, it's bisected by the large line, which is the intended or requested boundary line of what's labeled as number 16 and number 18. And do you have a drain field intended on new Lot 16? I mean, is it already located?
One more time?
There's a new drain field on what you're requesting to be the new 16. Has that been approved?
No, the man in the rear.
Is the county also requiring a backup drain field?
They're only requiring a backup drain field?
No.
I think, are you saying that the drain field that is pictured here is the existing drain field associated with the existing house?
Yes.
Okay, and your proposed drain field is at the rear of Lot 16?
Your proposed drain field is at the rear of Lot 16?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, but that is not depicted on the drawing?
No, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead. Anything else? Anything further? Mr. Skura or Mr. Hagy?
I think we've covered it.
The challenge for us is, as we're looking at expanding number 16 and him purchasing it, before he buys it, he wants to make sure, one, this could be a conforming lot. And then, once that happens, spend the money to do a front test.
But it's not going to be a conforming lot.
Well, not conforming, but a variant, a variance. That we can get a variance before we start spending money.
I think I understand what you're saying.
And obviously, this involves stuff that if we can't get a.
Yeah, I understand. When was the house built? Do you, if you know?
It's on line 1952.
But that's not evidence.
It's the town's records.
It is a record. And you know what? Let's discuss that a little bit later because the latest bomb stuff is very helpful for Washington, Mass. In fact, I think probably, we could probably use it as an acceptable, in the legal field, it'll be taking judicial notice of the fact. With this and other hearings, it's got to be something that's easily. Well, you know what I'm talking about.
I think we can accept as true the fact that this house was constructed sometime before the zoning ordinances were implemented.
Yeah.
And that's why these lots, although they are nonconforming to what's required now, we believe that's the reason that they exist as they do.
That was clear, I think, in Carla Orwepin's report, which is also part of the record. Okay, does any of the members of the zoning board of appeals have? Well, first of all, let's go through the rest of it here. At this point, let's have the members of the ZBA report on any site inspection and any conversations with petitioner. I can say that, go ahead.
So petitioner done? Have we concluded?
I believe so, then. Anything further?
Anything further? I would just refer.
Go ahead.
To the planner's letter. And I mean, there's nobody here that seems to be objecting as far as from the neighborhood. I just think it would be beneficial to that piece of property to have a nice-looking home on it more than a, you know, since there are none. I've built quite a few houses in Ann Arbor. I've built quite a few houses in Ann Arbor.
Is this property any different from any other property with the same characteristics? Is this something special, so to speak?
It is to me, just aesthetics.
You mean Lot 16 we're talking about? Lot 16, 17, and 18, is there anything involved in, is there anything involved in those three lots that is so different from, or different at all from any other similar lots in the township that make this one special for any reason?
I don't think so. They were split before the ordinance.
They weren't split, I don't think, but they were established.
Yeah, because the house next to, probably next to 16 to the left or to the west, I think. I mean, it's the same size lot, has house on it because it was built back in 50s, 60s. So I mean, so it's kind of similar to that.
And other, the other folks in that strip there have extended the width of their homes over the extra lots they had purchased.
Yeah, I saw that there's something in your submittal information I wanted to ask about. You said there are neighbors that have expanded by building on adjacent lots. Are you talking about the same small lots in that area?
How do you start that? Could you start that sentence one more time?
Yes. You say in your submittal.
Yes.
In answer to the question, and I'm referring to question G is involved, is there any other property in your neighborhood that has the same? is there any other property in your neighborhood that has the same or similar conditions? If so, identify by street address. And your answer is, there are neighbors that have expanded by building on adjacent lots.
Correct.
Similar to the one that has occurred here.
Correct.
Okay.
For the record, I note that in the variance analysis, there is overhead photographs that show that a row of lots similar to this.
Yes.
All non-conforming in the same way with houses that straddle some of those lines.
Yeah, okay.
Well, do any of the members of the board have any questions? Go ahead, Jerry.
The dotted line that you have on number 16, is that a house print?
That's the end wall, would be allowed. The house would be smaller. Yes, only about 1,800 square feet, three-bedroom. And the drain field required for that is 30 by 40, or 1,200 square feet. Doesn't have to be 30 by 40, but it has to be at least 1,200 square feet.
Are the clearances...
The setbacks?
Setback for that particular layout to the property lines.
Well, according to that, it's 20 feet on either side.
I know, but what is the...
Correct.
Would you say that again, please?
What is the required setback?
Yeah.
For our one.
It's 150?
The setbacks are 20 feet on the side, 50 feet from there.
All right, that was all I had.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. Walsh?
I guess I didn't drive by specifically to see it. I live off of East Deli. I've driven by countless times, so I'm aware of the property, of the neighboring houses.
Yeah, any conversations with the petitioner? I should also say that I've driven by it as well for purposes of this hearing, but I had no conversations with anyone.
I also drove by, had no conversations. I'm familiar with it just from driving in the neighborhood, but again, had no conversations.
Mr. Kang, has there been any conversations? Well, you're, you are familiar with the zoning ordinance, section 36-399, You have to meet the requirements of zoning ordinance, the new zoning ordinance. If you do have three separate lots which are owned by the same person and don't meet the requirements. You're familiar with our zoning ordinances?
The zoning ordinance? What's the second word you're saying?
Yeah, are you familiar?
Yes.
Okay, so you understand that there's a problem with a non-conforming lot, and you're asking for the creation of essentially two non-conforming lots instead of three non-conforming lots, but it's still going to be non-conforming.
Yes, sir.
And before us today is the question of whether we grant variance to permit that, those non-conformances in the resulting lots.
It's more beneficial to the township to have a house on.
Well, I think, well... Have you had any discussions with any of the neighbors?
No. Because I didn't know where, this is like, I had to get this through first before I would talk to the neighbors I thought of. I mean, they're, and no one's approached me while I've been out there. I wanted to speak to the people next door, but never called them.
Never what?
Called them outside, so. But I'm sure they got notified.
Hope so.
Also, the, there's a stake survey there, so they've seen that. They've seen the for sale sign. They know that that's going for sale. And they've been approached prior to us even putting it on the market to see if they were interested in purchasing 16.
Yeah, that's good for me. All right. Are there, I think, if I neglected to do it, I'll do it again here. Are there any members of the public who support the petitioner who would like to speak? Ms. Rainey, do you show anybody?
No, no hands raised.
All right. Are there any members of the public who oppose the petitioner and desire to speak? Raise your hand. Well, I guess, I guess I'll solicit a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Support. Voted by Ms. Rainey, supported by Mr. Kang, is to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, we'll close the public hearing. At this point, the ZBA will discuss this monit ourselves. I mean, this is taken from Carlisle Wardman's report, but it quotes, I think accurately, section 36-399, which says that if two or more lots or combinations of lots and portions of lots which are contiguous and in single ownership are of record at the time of adoption or amendment of this chapter, and if all or part of the lots do not meet the requirements established for a within area, the lands involved shall be considered to be an undivided parcel for purposes of this chapter. No portion of said parcels shall be used or sold in a manner which diminishes the compliance with lot width and area requirements established by this chapter, nor shall any division of any parcel be made which creates a lot with width or area less than the requirements of this chapter. The way that I look at it, the, it's, it also is consistent with which essentially says that certain lot structures or uses were lawful before the ordinance was adopted and have become non-conforming as a result of the chapter and amendments. And it is the intent of this chapter to permit such non-conformities to remain until they are discontinued or removed, but not to encourage their survival. Or where discontinuance or removal is not feasible to gradually upgrade such non-conformities to conforming status. Non-conforming uses and structures shall not be enlarged, expanded, or extended except as provided in the zoning ordinance, and shall not be used as grounds for adding other structures and uses of lots and structures which are prohibited. Non-conforming uses and structures are declared by this chapter to be incompatible with the structures and uses permitted in various districts. The idea of it in a nutshell, in my opinion, is that these, the proposed solution, as it were, to create two non-conforming lots from three non-conforming lots, in my opinion, does not meet either the intent nor the specific wording of the zoning ordinance. Though it may be expressed that, you know, it's better to build on something than not to have it built. I think that there are reasons why the zoning ordinances do have minimum lot sizes in various districts. And people who live there rely upon the fact that unless there is something unusual about a particular situation, that the zoning ordinance will be in effect. Although I have sympathy with, you know, the fact that I'm sure the owner of the three lots, because of the changes in the law after the house was built, essentially mean that you really can't do what's being proposed here. Nevertheless, the situation still exists. That's my opinion.
You know, if I look at the map there with the lots that are behind these short or small lots, they all look like they are conforming, visually at least. And it's just, I'm surprised that there is no other feedback that you've gotten from any of the people around.
You mean other neighbors and such?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, yeah, I think that may be true. The reason why people may not appear at these meetings to either encourage or discourage a particular request covers a lot of ground. I'm not sure we're in a position to say much about it.
I, reading section 36-399B, it seems to me that there's two requirements that they're talking about here. If you want to combine lots to create something that might be non-conforming. And it starts by saying that you can't... It uses, no portion of the parcel shall be used or sold in a manner which diminishes compliance with the lot width and area. So, so far, I think we're okay, because in this case, even though it doesn't comply, it doesn't diminish compliance. It actually makes it closer to compliance. So I think that requirement is met by the petitioner. I think it's a little more difficult to meet the second requirement, which says, nor shall any division of any parcel be made, which creates a lot with width or area less than the requirements stated in this chapter. So the, I think that that isn't talking about a question of degree. That's just either you can or you can't. And it says you can't have a lot split unless you meet the requirements of the zoning code. I do think that, so I'm not sure that we have the power to grant, to approve a lot split that creates two lots that do what are here, the way I read the ordinance. We do have the power to grant variances for setback requirements. And I'm wondering if there is some way that this, what you're looking for can be accomplished, not by making this into two lots which are non-conforming, but by negotiating either easements or some other boundary adjustments where the proposed building, new building, or proposed drain field might violate setback requirements, but not create actual non-conforming lots. That is to say, some way of actually creating lots that conform to, that leave the lot lines alone, but have some other mechanism where we would have power to grant the petitioner. I don't know if anyone here has any ideas on that, or if you've explored it.
I don't, I don't get doing that. It's just not legal. And that is not legal before us.
Well, I guess the question is...
An alternative is not before us.
Right, that's true. But the question really is, if, where it says, nor shall any... I should revise what I said. The way this reads, it says that you can't make that lot split if it creates a non-conforming lot. But isn't that what the ZBA, why we're here, is to grant variance from that very requirement?
It is if the other requirements of variance are met. And I see nothing, and there's been no evidence presented, and I see nothing that makes this any different from any of the other parcels immediately adjoining it on the road, or perhaps some others in the township, I don't know. There's nothing special or unique in this case. So I understand what you're saying, and yeah, I mean, if some alternative was possible, number one, I would have expected it to be submitted. But we have to deal with what we're being asked to do. And I don't think it could be, but perhaps I'm jumping.
Let's be brutally honest, we haven't really agreed on any setbacks anyway, because however many of the last variances were setbacks, we pretty much said no. So to even propose that as a possible solution, which isn't on the table. My question is, and it would be nice if Laura were here, maybe Doug can answer. Lot 18, when they expanded it and built the garage onto 17, whenever that was, does lot 17 really exist anymore?
Just because you might virtue the fact that there was a lot. I don't think, I think, I think it exists. I don't think it's, it, I mean, there's an issue of taxation, but I have a funny feeling that the provisions on the taxes are pretty much the same as this.
Yeah, you can't sell 17 as a stand-alone at the moment.
You can't, actually, you can't sell any of them.
Well, yeah, technically, you're right, given 399D.
Unless you combine all three.
So I have, I have a question for Doug. I mean, typically, when someone builds on an adjacent property, if they own it, is it typically now standard procedure to have to combine those parcels? Or is that just in a commercial building permit?
So are you, you're talking to me, so there's a question for me?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
And just for record, this is Doug Luwan of Carlisle Wardman, who is on Zoom.
Yeah, this is, this is a, a unique part of the zoning ordinance that applies, really, I guess, applies to any lot, but particularly, you'll see it in application with residential. It doesn't come up very often, because it's not necessarily common that three separate nonconforming parcels are in common ownership. And so, as, as has been, as has been discussed tonight, when you have nonconforming parcels under common ownership, for the purposes of zoning, they're looked, they're looked at as a single parcel. So the two parcels, you know, if these were, if these were all under separate ownership, so if the applicant, or if the owner sold these parcels 15 years ago, 20 years ago, and they were all in separate ownership, they would be considered nonconforming lots of record, and in theory, you could put a separate home on each parcel. Now, there is the issue of the encroachment on the one, on the existing house, but, you know, these, because they're in common ownership, we have this provision of the ordinance that says they have to be thought of as a single, undivided parcel, while in reality, there's three property ID numbers, you know, three legal descriptions, I assume the applicant's been paying taxes on three separate parcels all these years. So this is a, you know, you saw our report, I'm not going to repeat what I said, but I, you know, I think this is kind of a unique circumstance in that there are three nonconforming parcels, the applicant's proposing to eliminate one of the nonconforming parcels, and in effect, eliminate the encroaching setback of the house. So if this property variance is granted, we'll actually get rid of a nonconforming lot and a, and a nonconforming structure setback. So
But the remainder would still be nonconforming.
The two, the two lots would still be nonconforming. And I heard some discussion, the zoning board of appeals has the ability to vary, you know, any part of the zoning ordinance. And so this, in effect, is a dimensional variance. You would be allowing a variance for lots that are less than the required width in area, which are dimensional, you know, dimensional characteristics. So I have no problem, you know, it's up to you guys, but I'm just saying, procedurally, this is a variance you can, if you find it meets the criteria that a variance has to meet, this certainly is something you can act on. So I don't know if that helped address your question, Jan, but that's my, that's my thought.
And, okay, and then, I guess my other concern is what we, I mean, we have well septic, the, you know, secondary septic, I mean
Well, I don't know if we have a
We, I know, we don't. And so one of the issues
That's the burden on the applicant.
Exactly. And so
Beyond us at the moment.
We don't know if there, and I guess there isn't any evidence to show that there aren't other issues that may be created by them.
Yeah, Doug, Doug, when wells are required, does county require now a secondary well field to be established?
No. No, we, well, not for, not, not, not as a part of our, I shouldn't say no, I mean, they, they might, for their own review, but that's not something that CIO Township reviews when, when it comes to land divisions. So, I mean, you can certainly ask the question that, you know, if you were concerned about that, you could maybe ask the applicant to provide a little more information, if you wanted to table a request. But I review all the land divisions in the township, and a number of years ago, the state law changed, we used to be able to require septic location, well location, and the Land Division Act changed probably 15 years ago, where we can no longer, I can't even ask for that information anymore. So that's not something typically we get, or something we can even ask for.
Even though in this case, the division goes right through one of the septic fields?
Well, they would have to, that would be addressed between, you know, one, to back up, if that's a concern of yours, you can certainly ask the applicant to address that. However, that would have to be, you know, prior to any building permits, that would have to be addressed.
But that would be a question of negotiation between the adjacent property owners as to an easement to have a septic on, partially on an adjacent property or whatever.
Yeah, I'm pretty certain the health department's not going to allow an easement on another piece of property for a septic system.
Okay.
That septic's going to have to be moved. And frankly, that could be a condition of your approval. If you were, or, you know, if you were going to move that direction, that could be a condition of approval, that, that prior to land division, the applicant provide satisfactory, you know, satisfactory approval from Washington County Health Department.
And Doug, the master plan doesn't show any changing in density or in this area?
No, I don't think we changed any, I don't think the master plan changed in this part of the township.
I'm just trying to go through the, sort of the finding of facts and trying to figure out, you know, exceptional circumstances. And, I mean, there are other properties adjacent that are multiple properties owned by a single entity. I don't know if that's, makes this exceptional.
It appears.
It appears.
It appears.
From the property, from the mapping property records, yes. And is it a substantial property right to be able to divide that property and sell it?
Into two nonconforming lots.
Right. Is it material detrimental to the public welfare? Or material, the injures to property improvements? I don't think so.
But what happens, what happens when the neighbors to the south, or the neighbors to the north, or actually east or west, what happens if they say, well, we want to do the same thing?
They come to us.
Yeah.
President has been said. No, each of these are unique, we've been through that.
Yeah.
And, you know
Curious, how is the current house, God, how is it listed? Is it listed as three pieces, or it's not listed?
It is.
It is listed for sale.
Houses?
Yeah. Right now, it's listed as anticipating, trying to sell that lot, we're just including 18 and a half, 50 feet of 17. That's how we have it listed. Because if this doesn't go through, then we're just going to relist it, probably all three that's what the seller wants to do. You know, they've been, you know, they've lived there a long time, I forget how long it's been, 40 years, and they've been paying taxes on all three parcels, paid the CIO Township.
Well, I think that, when you're talking about taxes, it's kind of a different issue. We're not part of the board review, so. But I, yeah, I'm doing it from scant memories, I really, I really not, I believe, I believe that the tax rules take this sort of thing into account, but I don't know for sure.
Well, I have to say, just for purposes of discussion, I, if we had the power to grant the variance, and if it could meet the other requirements of the health department and so on, I would be inclined to do it, because I think that a variance in this case would be consistent with the overall goals of the zoning code and the master plan, in the sense that the reason we have setback requirements and lot size requirements is to, and frontage requirements, is to moderate the density, to keep density a little bit lower than it might otherwise be in the township, and to guarantee that there's going to be room to build, build houses of a size that's appropriate to that land use and all that. And in this case, what's being proposed puts us in a better position, not a worse position in that regard. Someone could build three little houses on these three lots right now with a higher density.
No, they, no, they couldn't.
You think that's a setback requirement?
They can't. They exist, they don't meet, they don't meet the area.
The existing house also is
The range is on 17.
Right, but for example, lot, the west portion, the westernmost parcel, which has no buildings on it all, is, you're saying that that's just a totally unbuildable piece of land at this point?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think all three of them are
Okay.
Now, one other, just, and this gets into, you know, if you look at the intent, is to provide adequate spacing, and in this zoning, that would be, you know, 40 feet between structures, if you look at, and the one issue, I mean, one is just a nonconforming piece. However, there is that issue with the, it'd probably be lot 15, where it appears to be, you know, pretty close to the property line, like maybe five feet from the property line. I mean
It may be another nonconforming situation.
Well, it is.
Which is permitted to exist.
Yeah, it is, but if we're saying, how do you make it, how do you not, how do you make it as conforming as, if, if it's the space, then, I mean, one of the conditions could be that you had a setback of, you know, 35 feet, you know, from that piece of property. I mean, I don't know if that's allowable or not.
You wouldn't be able to do it with what's been submitted to us today.
That defeats the purpose of asking for the additional 50, because the house size needs to be a certain
Well, it would, it could be a skinnier, longer house, but it would, it would not diminish the spacing between the structures.
We're getting back to finding a solution, rather than addressing what's here.
Well, I guess I was interpreting that as a condition of the
Yes, great. I, I guess I'm where you were looking at it, and looking at B is the ability to split and do this, a property right. I don't have an answer for that.
And, and, I guess the circumstances are, had it been, I mean, okay, let's say, you know, if it was two lots plus one lot, and they had two different owners, you know, that, then it would have been a property right to be able to develop that. So because it's one ownership, the zoning ordinance doesn't consider that necessarily a property right then?
Not if it's
Under one ownership.
Other, if there were two owners, well, they're both nonconforming, and you can't expand them. I mean, basically, that's the idea. I mean, as it says, the idea of the whole thing is to eventually make them
But you can't, yeah, but I don't think you can zone a property out of being able to develop it.
But 399B was based on contiguous of single ownership. As Doug said, if they were separate, that's a different story, and 399B may not apply.
Right.
The problem is, it's all three is under the same ownership, which means we're still back into the, can we say yes to enough of these on the variance to say that there's a case to approve, or we say no, and there isn't? And I'm still at the point of B, is this a substantial property right? And building another house there, I don't know that that's a substantial property right.
Can we just go, can we go through the, you know?
Why don't you bring a motion?
Well, I wanted, I guess I wanted to discuss the, you know, what are the, are there, are there any exceptional circumstances that we can identify?
No.
I think, given when these lots were created versus the time, yes, I would say there probably are some exceptional, if I had to lean one way or the other. Again, my problem is B.
And I do, I mean, with three, the idea of the being detrimental, I mean, it does affect the one nonconforming property, and we haven't heard from the neighbors, although they had It won't adversely affect the master plan. Is it a substantial injustice?
I can do, is it a property right? I mean, is it an injustice not to build there?
Well, I solicit some motion from somebody.
I don't know that we've all made up our minds yet. I think we're still, I still think we're struggling with
Yeah, I'd like to have maybe Doug weigh in on what historically the boards has done with the substantial property right question. Is it considered a substantial property right to be able to subdivide your property is the basic question?
Under what circumstances? Now, let's let Doug answer.
You ready, Doug?
Okay, so, how I look at that question, let me look at my report here real quick. So the criteria of the ordinance, I think that was read, says that such variance is necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property right possessed by other property in the same zone or vicinity. So when I look at this criteria generally for a variance request, I try to look in the neighborhood, and, you know, neighborhood's a subjective term, but, you know, in, in the neighboring homes up to a certain distance, we kind of look around to see if there's other folks that live in the general neighborhood that have the same situation that the applicant's asking for. So in this particular case, the applicant's asking for the, you know, in essence, it's a lot combination, it's not really a lot division, but they're asking for a lot, lot combination of three nonconforming lots to two nonconforming lots. And so then, I, you know, tried to look, and Laura and I both tried to look at what was happening on some of the adjacent lots. And there are, in fact, a number of homes in this part of Miller Road that are on nonconforming lots. And there are, in fact, a number of homes in this part of Miller Road that are on nonconforming lots. So there's homes on lots that are less than the required area and lot width. So to me, you know, that's what you're looking for, you're looking, are, is, are other homeowners or property owners within this area enjoying the right that the applicant is asking for? And that can be applied to a setback, it could be applied to, you know, building height, whatever, whatever the variance may be. In this case, it's a nonconforming lot width, and I think if you look at the aerial photograph for this area, you will, you will definitely see a few lots within this neighborhood that are enjoying this right. So is it all of them? No. As I think was pointed out by Mr. Oth, you know, there are some homes that have been built on combined lots. And so it's not, you know, this isn't a clear, necessarily a clear cut one, however, there are some homes within the near proximity to where the applicant is proposing that, you know, have homes on these more narrow lots. So that's, you ask the question, that's what I look for, is I try to see if, if what's, you know, we don't want to deny something to an applicant that a bunch of the other neighbors have. And so that, that's how I look at that criteria.
And if I could, Mr. Chairman, just looking at the Washington County GIS data, it appears from the GIS data that the adjacent property, which is.
To the east or to the west?
It'd be to the west, I guess. It's kind of on an angle there, but it would be probably property lot number 16, H0814186015.
Lot 15.
15, yeah. It appears that that lot is a single lot. And then, then it also appears that 3670, which is in the other direction, several lots over, two lots over, is also a smaller lot. The rest of them are all combined, are multiple parcels with a single ownership according to the Washington County GIS map. So we do have two.
Mine, though, wasn't the house size. Mine was.
Well, this is the lot size, not the house size. It's a lot size.
But mine is, are there examples nearby that someone has split to do this? And I don't, I've lived, or I have for 15 years, no one's done anything on that stretch of Miller in that timeframe. I don't know when. I guess that's.
I, I think Doug was, you were saying, you don't consider this a lot split, you consider it a lot combination, is that right? Within the meaning of.
Excuse the pun, but aren't we splitting pairs?
Well, no, I don't think so. Again, because I think 399 says you can't split off something that's nonconforming. And if what we're talking about is actually treated as a combination, that, that makes a difference to me. So Doug, is there some township position on that?
No, no. No, there's no, there's no uniform. I mean, this, this situation occurs so infrequently that I can't even, I know it's happened before, I can't even remember the last time this has happened. You know, Tom's been on the ZBA for a number of years. I don't know that you ever remember this happening. It's been probably 10 years.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't think so. I have had two stretches on the ZBA where I never seen one.
I think you'd also say that with the, you know, the master plan, the zoning does provide for open space. I mean, that's really what setbacks are supposed to provide for. And we would be, you know, with, between lot 16 and 17, we would be creating a lack of, you know, open space between those two, depending where that house was built. Essentially, we would be greatly diminishing the open space that is intended by the master plan in the current zone.
And do I understand correctly that the seller in this case would be able to sell all three of these lots together without any problem? It's just the.
I don't see why not.
Right, okay, so they, as to the seller, they're, they're able, they still have some use for the parcel that they can utilize. Yeah, I mean, if we analogize this, forget about the fact that they were separate tax parcel numbers on this. In a situation where if we had a property owner that's got a house on a piece of land, and they want to split off a piece of land, and that piece that they want to split off is nonconforming, I guess typically, we have not permitted that to happen. That is, there would not be any grounds for a variance for that purpose.
Not unless there was something very unique about.
Right.
I don't think, I'm doing it off the cuff.
Yeah. And I have to say, if there were multiple homes, you know, on, you know, they're all 75 foot parcels, and if there were multiple homes on, you know, that were all on single parcels, and this one had three, and they were doing, you know, the Congo with two, there might be a, you know, you know, looking at the character of the neighborhood and so forth, you might, I might feel differently about it, but I don't really see that as the case here.
Yeah, I think, I think I'm persuaded also. That this really isn't that different from a situation where you've got an owner that got a chunk of land, they want to split part of it off to allow someone else to build on it. There's limitations on what they can do, and that's.
Oh, sure, well, then you get into the Division Act and all that sort of thing.
Well, there's that as well, but I guess I'm just saying that commercially, if you look at what's going on here, and in terms of the restrictions that we accept, that we impose on property owners, we can go back and frame that in terms of a substantial right to, you know, is there, is it a substantial property right to be able to subdivide in violation of the zoning ordinance? And I guess I accept that that might not be the case.
Just to throw something else on the wall, that doesn't necessarily apply to zoning, if the property owner is paying taxes on three separate things, does the tax law essentially say that this is a separate entity and needs to be treated as such?
Well, that's what I was making reference to before, and I'd rather not.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to it.
Yeah.
Because then we're.
Well, yeah, but still. I don't think it really changes too much. I don't think it changes anything. Because that's, that's a different issue entirely.
Well, it changes it as such because then it says, regardless of what the tax laws are, that 399B prevents them from ever selling 16 as a separate standalone unit.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't think it says anything like that, but I, you know.
And I don't know, that's the only hiccup I can see is.
Well, still, you're still looking at 36399B, and the general rule.
I don't know which has precedent then. You know, if the tax law, because you've paid taxes all along, does that give you the right to treat it as a separate entity?
Oh, I don't, oh, yeah, that's, that's kind of all.
I don't know.
Although, but what Doug had said is, from a zoning standpoint, I guess what you're saying is the, is the tax law in differential to the zoning ordinance that says it'd be treated as one, essentially as one parcel.
Okay.
Okay, shall we, shall we go? Okay, so I am ready to make a motion.
All right, well, ready to hear a motion.
All right, so, in the matter of variance, number 22002 stern, variance 3700 Miller Road, in accordance with section 3675 of the SCIO Township, codified zoning ordinance to allow the following variances outlined here, one, which is, do I have to read all those? Can I just say, as noted here, one, two, three, four, five variances? Or do I have to read them into the record?
Oh, it would probably be best if you read them into the record fairly quickly.
All right, here we go. Number one, variance from section 3675 to allow 100 foot lot width, a 50 foot reduction in the required lot width for parcel 16. Variance from section 3675 to allow a lot area less than the one acre minimum to allow a 22,450 square foot lot, parcel 16. Variance from section 3675 to allow 125 foot lot width, a 25 foot reduction in the required lot width, parcel 18. Number four, a variance from 36, section 3675 to allow a lot area less than the one acre minimum to allow a 33,675 square foot lot, parcel 18. And a variance from section 36399B to allow reconfiguration of three nonconforming lots under the same ownership into two nonconforming lots for the purpose of development on the same lot, parcel 16. The requested variances should not be granted due to the following findings apparent. There are not exceptional circumstances or conditions applicable to the property that do not apply generally to other properties or classes of use in the same district. Multiple adjacent properties have multiple parcel ownerships, and, and other dwellings span multiple parcels. Anyone want to add anything to that? Okay, the variance is not necessary for the preservation and enjoyment of substantial property right possessed by the property in the same zone and vicinity. There are multiple properties that are owned by the same owners adjacent, and multiple properties have built across those parcel lines. Anyone want to add anything more to that?
Why don't you go ahead, and we'll, we'll add as we go along later on.
Okay, sounds good. That the granting of such a variance or modification, let's see, will be materially detrimental to the public welfare or materially interest to property or improvements in such a zone or district which the property is located. It would impact the expected zoning setbacks, or the spacing between buildings, should this variance be granted. And that the granting of such variance will adversely affect the purpose or the objectives of the master plan of the township, which, one of the primary purposes of the lot area and setbacks are to provide adequate open space. Exceptional circumstances which would otherwise result in substantial injustice, the circumstances or conditions upon which this variance is based. Now, this is due result from the actions of the applicant or the predecessors entitled because they are trying to combine the lots, so they are actually creating the nonconforming issues, these nonconforming issues.
I would also want an amendment which was offered in the past, having to do with the master plan. The granting of a variance will not advance, will not affect the purposes or objectives of the master plan. It was explained to me that the fact that it's adversely affecting the purposes of the zoning code is different from the master plan. And that actually, a variance of this nature does not really affect the master plan, at least that's what Laura has described to me in the past in making motions on that point.
Yeah, I think, I think Ms. Ramey is correct.
I accept your amendment.
Accept the amendment to change part of your motion.
Will that adversely affect the purpose of the objectives of the master plan? Thank you.
Let's do this. The other motion on the floor by Ms. Heldon Brand, to deny the zoning request based upon the reasons stated, that there are no exceptional circumstances applicable, that is not necessary to preserve a substantial property right. It will materially be detrimental to expected zoning spaces between buildings, will not affect the master plan, and does result from the actions of the applicant since his requesting nonconforming lots. First of all, do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Mr. Walsh, discussion.
Can I make an amendment? For item two, the variance, can we say no evidence was presented to show that this is a preservation and enjoyment of a property right?
Yeah, add that to the, yeah, and no evidence was presented that it is a substantial property right.
Okay, so, no evidence has been presented to indicate a substantial property right has been lost, correct?
Correct.
All right. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll ask Mr. Walsh take the roll.
Oth.
Yes.
Olbertson.
Yes.
Ramey.
Yes.
Walsh, yes. Kengas?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes five to nothing. Thank you, gentlemen, I appreciate it. Moving on, the next item on the agenda. Hold on a minute, do you have anything? I don't have a noted here on the agenda. Then the next item, a first business is approval of the minutes of June 16.
Your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck. Minutes of June 16, 2022. Let's see, I have identified one correction. And this, you know, I got to tell you, I really think whoever's doing it is doing a good job.
Yes.
So, congratulations.
Thank you, Chair.
On page two, a minor change, under the paragraph, there's two paragraphs that begin Chair Oth, but I'm talking about the second one on page two, that says, Chair Oth notes that the applicant has supplied a list of other homes in the subdivision with nonconforming setbacks, the home and the subdivision. The home and the subdivision could have been built prior to the current zoning ordinance. That should be changed to read, could have been built prior to the current zoning ordinance and would therefore be non-conforming to present zoning requirements.
So change were to would.
And add be.
Would be.
Yeah, would therefore be. Which I think is what I meant to say if I didn't actually say that. Makes a hell of a lot more sense.
That's the only thing you found in this.
That's the only thing.
It was an incredible job.
It really was a great job.
I think it's Cheryl who was the person that's doing the...
Well, she did a good job.
Very good job.
Okay, anybody else have any other corrections?
Yeah, I thought they were good.
Move to adopt.
Okay, motion to adopt the minutes as corrected in one spot. Motion by Ms. Ramey, supported by Ms. Culberson. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any objection? Motion passes, minutes are approved. Next section on the agenda is other business, discussion only with Board of Plan Commission liaison. Which I hope to have continued in all the agendas as we go forward.
All right, well, good.
So you've given us all very nice little business cards. And could you explain?
What they are?
What they are?
Yes, so the Environmental Sustainability Task Force has a group of five Sees, Masters, Practicum students who are helping us with our community engagement on the Climate Action Plan. It's an environmental and climate action plan. And so this is a QR code or a link. You can also go online to the Environmental Sustainability Task Force webpage on the township website and click on that. It takes about ten, fifteen minutes, you know, depending on, you know, how much thinking you want to do with it. And so far, we have a hundred and sixty, sixty responses. So, you know, that is actually pretty good for township surveys. So we're also reaching out to HOAs, and some have agreed to put the link in their newsletter or send it out in their email blast. And they are also interviewing, but several different aspects. Then they're going to analyze, because part of the survey says what, what area of the township you live in, and so if there's, you know, if we're missing some participation from certain area of the township, they will actually try and go out and connect with members of that group. So that's that. The other thing that you may be interested in is we are going to have a working session next Monday at six, joined by Zoom. We are going to have a pretty hefty discussion on the PUD update. And it has to do with where PUD might be applicable. Is it still going to be in all zoning area, zoning districts? Or do we confine it to primarily the water sewer district and rely on the open space provisions for clustering and so forth? And some other things which get into actually looking at what are included as considered community benefits in the ordinance and some other things. Adding to the list of incentives for increased density. Next on the block will be probably EV charging ordinance. And then what we're, I think we're planning on doing is, once we have agreement on PUD and the EV charging level, a kind of a working session with the trustees before sending it on, so.
What's the idea of the EV ordinance?
That would be to include, the way most of them are written, there is a percentage of the parking that either needs to be, and you can choose to make it EV-ready, meaning your conduits and your electrical have to be, have the capacity for a certain number of EV charging stations. And, and then multifamily, how do you provide access to EV charging in multifamily sites? And whether or not you actually provide charging stations or EV charging ready for, it could be new residences or...
Is there any requirements of EV in new construction?
This would be new construction. You can't go back and...
Well, no, 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 but currently...
Currently, no. There are, there are no requirements currently. And actually, this is coming up, you know, a lot in our discussions, and most, it's interesting, most developers are agreeing to a certain amount because they do see it coming. And this would just, rather than having to rely on their good graces, this would, would be a more of a requirement, so it would be uniformly enacted.
Have you folks received any feedback from Detroit Edison or Conners Power?
Actually, they are, they're supporting a lot of EV readiness with their grants and so forth now.
Well, I guess that is a poor question. Of course, they'd be in favor of...
So you mean, as far as can we, can they support it?
Can they sustain it, yeah. Do they have their facilities?
And it's, it's definitely part of their planning too. Because there are an awful lot of ordinances like that that are starting. I don't know if Confield has adopted theirs yet, I should check. But Ann Arbor has, and I know Confield was talking about it.
Is it framed in terms of like so many charging stations per dwelling unit?
Yeah, or parking space for commercial, that type of thing.
And what does Ann Arbor require?
They're, we actually got some feedback on theirs, they're adjusting theirs a bit. And I think they're just going to, either it's EV-ready, where you have the service and you have the conduit, or you require them to actually be installed. You know, those are kind of the two departments. And the first isn't as expensive as the rest of the stuff.
Kind of on a different note, and not to make them any longer than necessary, but does the Plan Commission ever see any heat pumps coming up in construction?
Oh, yeah. And actually, we've gotten commitments. We've typically asked if they've looked at all-electric construction. And most of them have said that they would look at it. We do have, a couple of developers have said that they, and none of this has been approved yet, but, you know, for certain parts, you know, whether it be the townhouses or certain, that they would commit to all-electric for that.
So that's not all, the heat pump?
Yeah, well, I mean, that goes with, the heat pump goes with all-electric kind of thing?
Yes, sort of, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. And so, yeah, now we don't, Plan Commission doesn't say what kind of HVAC equipment are you using, it's more like, where is, you know, do you have any equipment that is, that could be seen and that kind of thing? But we don't really get into the specifics. But, yeah. So that is of the topic. And we haven't seen, we've, there've been some folks that we've suggested that they make sure that they have adequate structure and are solar-ready. And that kind of, and people tend, they...
US-made solar panels?
Or Canadian.
Yeah, that's true. Complying with Part fifteen, or actually any part FCC regulations. Very important.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, so, yeah, that's kind of what's up.
All right. Further?
No.
Thank you all. I disclose the motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
So moved by Ms. Ramey, supported by Mr. Walsh to adjourn the meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposition? So meeting is adjourned at eight forty. Eight forty. Well, we can turn off the recording.
Recording stopped.
Thanks for joking in the last minute, you did a great job. Thanks, Doug, if you're still there.